Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting for the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for January 23rd, 2023. Would you please stand as you are able and join me in the Pledge of Legions to the Flag?
I pledge the legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
I can hear you.
Is the clerk able to call the roll of the members? Or are we going to do that in-house? We can see him on the screen, but I don't hear him. Clerk Patrick, are you able to hear us?
I'll call the roll.
We are not able to hear you.
And I'm just going to go in the order in which I see. Councilor Hutchinson?
Here.
Councilor Hulteen?
Present.
Councilor Weaver?
Here.
Councilor Hoppe?
Present.
Mayor Starker?
I realize that's a lot.
Here.
Councilor Stites?
I cannot hear a word.
Present.
Councilor Ohm?
Here.
Councilor Dozeman?
And Councilor Noslerback?
Here.
Thank you. Councilors, any changes to the agenda to be noted? None, so ordered. We will now, we have one proclamation. This is a proclamation in support of Black History Month in February 2023. Whereas February's Black History Month is an annual celebration of achievements by Black Americans, recognition of their central role in U.S. history, and a time to reflect on the continued struggle for racial justice and equality. And whereas, experts say understanding Black history and learning more about systemic racism is essential for our country to grow as a nation. And whereas, Carter G. Woodson, known as the father of Black history, developed Black History Month. Woodson, whose parents were enslaved, was an author, historian, and the second Black American to earn a PhD at Harvard University. And whereas, Woodson chose February to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass, the famed abolitionist who escaped from slavery, and President Abraham Lincoln, who formally abolished slavery. And whereas, with the resolution passed in 2020, Wheat Ridge City Council confirmed that racism and hate have no place in our city, and there is much work to be done to stop longstanding and devastating racial injustices in our community. And whereas, the Wheat Ridge Race and Equity Task Force, which consists of diverse and multiple perspectives, began working in 2021 to review city practices, services, ordinances, and community systems, and identify policies and practices that contribute to discrimination. And whereas, the City of Wheat Ridge recognizes the importance of Black History Month and our ongoing commitment to continuous improvement and self-reflection in order to become a more inclusive and responsive community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Wheat Ridge City Council and the mayor formally designate the month of February 2022 as Black History Month, dated on January 23rd, 2023. Thank you. Okay, we are now at a public's right to speak, and members of the public may come and speak to council on any item not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes under this public's right to speak. If there is, we will, on any public hearings that we're addressing tonight, there will be an opportunity to speak at each one of those hearings. I don't have anyone signed up in the hall to speak, but if you are here and haven't signed up, you may speak, come to the podium and speak now. And if you're online and would like to speak, if you'll raise your hand, we'll bring you into the meeting. And I don't see anybody coming to speak at the podium, and I'll check to see, do we have anyone online?
We don't.
Okay, we will close our public's right to speak and go to Agenda Item Number One. This is our consent agenda. And Mr. Ohm, do you have this item?
Yes, Mayor. Give me one second, please. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I have four items under the consent agenda. I'd like to introduce Resolution 04-2023, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2022 general fund and renewal Wheat Ridge Bomb Projects Fund to reflect approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $658,768 to fund building division services and infrastructure projects. Number B, Resolution 05-2023, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2023 general fund budget to reflect approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $91,162.30 for the purchase and payment of various 2022 vehicle replacements and additions and the installation of lighting and auxiliary equipment in a total amount not to exceed $415,068.30. Item number C, motion to approve the purchase and payment of 2023 vehicle replacements and installation of lighting, auxiliary, and communications equipment in a total amount not to exceed $518,994.15. Item number D, motion to award a custodial services contract and approve subsequent payments in the amount not to exceed $429,221.40 to S&amp;B Confluence DBA Janie King of Colorado and approve a contingency in the amount of $10,000 for unforeseen custodial expenses.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items 1A through 1D?
I do, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve Items Number 1A, 1B, 1C, and 1D.
Second? We have a motion and a second by Mayor Protem Stites. Would the clerk please poll the council and, okay.
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go now to Agenda Item Number Two. Councilor Hoppe, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 01-2023, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the site lease agreement with Verizon Wireless for use of the municipal building cellular tower. At issue, the city entered into lease agreements with three cellular companies for replacement of the municipal building cellular tower. Those leases contemplate a start date of February 14, 2023. Because of supply chain delays, these leases must be amended to allow additional time for this work. Approval of this ordinance will extend the commencement date deadline to June 1st, 2023, and also grants authority for minor changes to the lease as needed.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'll note for the record that the next two items are the same as this one, and we will not read the ad issuance statement on this. Mr. Goff, do we have any further staff presentation on this item?
Just real briefly, Karen O'Donnell, our Parks and Rec Director, will give a quick update on this.
Thank you. Director O'Donnell.
Hi there. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I don't have much beyond the issue statement, but as you are aware, we came to you in June to move the leases forward with the three different carriers, and at that time, the documents suggested that the cell tower would be completed by February 14th, and with supply chain issues primarily related to the paint that's required for the tower that has been delayed. They feel pretty positive that June 1st date would be acceptable for completion, but additionally, we added that last piece about granting the authority to make minor changes. In the event that that gets pushed back a month or something like that, we don't need to come back to council to get approval, but we will stay on top of that project and continue to move that forward.
Thank you very much. Before I go to any questions from council, I will open this up to the public to speak on this public hearing for Agenda Item Number Two, if you would like to speak. I have no one signed up to speak. If you would like to speak and are here, you may come to the podium now. If you are online and would like to speak, please raise your hand, and I don't see anyone with their hands raised, and no one coming forward, so we will close our public's right to speak on this and see if council has any questions for staff. Seeing none, Councilor Hoppe, may I have a motion? Oh, wait a minute, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Councilor Hoppe, may I have a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 01-2023, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the site lease agreement with Verizon Wireless for the use of the municipal building cellular tower, and that it take effect upon adoption and signature by the mayor as permitted by Section 5.11 of the Charter.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilor Ohm. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. That will bring us to Agenda Item Number Three. Councilor Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Be happy to, Mayor. Thank you. This is Council Bill Number 02-2023, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the site lease agreement with T-Mobile West LLC for the use of the municipal building cellular tower. I am not reading the at-issue because it is the same as the previous.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. It is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. We have no further staff report. If there's any members in the public that would like to speak on this, you may come to the podium now. I have no one signed up to speak. If you are online, please raise your hand, and we'll bring you into the meeting. We have no one coming forward to speak. Are there any questions from council on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Council Weaver, may I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 02-2023, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the site lease agreement with T-Mobile West LLC for use of the municipal building cell tower, and that it take effect upon adoption and signature by the mayor as permitted by Section 5.11 of the Charter.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Hulteen. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Once again, Mayor, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to Agenda Item Number Four. Councilor Hutchinson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number 03-2023, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the amended and restated site lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for use of the municipal building cellular tower.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing, not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing and invite any members of the public who are here to speak on this item. If you are here in city council chambers, no one has signed up to speak, or if you're online, you may speak on this item. Seeing none, we will close our public's right to speak on this item. And are there any questions of council before we go to a motion on this? I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion is in order. Councilor Hutchinson?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 03-2023, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the amended and restated site lease agreement with New Cellular Wireless PCS LLC for the use of the municipal building cell tower, and that it take effect upon adoption and signature by the mayor as permitted by Section 5.11 of the Charter.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilor Noslerback. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Council Weaver? There we go. Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We will now move to Agenda Item Number Five. This is a motion to approve appointments to boards and commissions. Ad issue in this item is due to the recent resignations of members of both the Liquor License Authority Board, along with the Board of Adjustment, the staff is requesting to move current board members who were appointed out of district due to vacant seats those resignations have made. So this is concerning District Number Two. Councilor Hulteen, do you have a motion that you can forward for this item?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Lenny Ortiz to the Liquor License Authority Board, District, term ending 3225.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilor Ohm. Will the clerk please poll the council on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
One moment, yes.
Can I just get a little clarification on, the description was a little bit vague because it's, it triggered one, so a couple people resigned, and I'm just not really clear on like how all the shuffling came together.
Let's go to, our clerk is not able to join us this meeting. Well, he's with us remotely, but I'm not sure that his microphone, but let me go to Ms. Shek and see.
Can you hear me now, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I can, yes. The clerk, did you hear the question and are you able to respond to that?
Yes, and yes. The Charter and code require that we place people in boards and commissions in the district in which they live unless there is no one from that district who has applied or is available to be appointed. In that case, we may appoint people out of district, but the law also requires us to correct that at our first opportunity. So, on advice of Mr. Dahl, we ask those folks who are out of district to resign their positions as of yesterday, so we don't have two people in the same seat ever. I believe Mr. Dahl's words were not even for a microsecond, and this legally puts these folks in a seat in their own district. Did that help, Councilmember Hulteen?
Thank you. Some of that was helpful. It just, the prior action only mentions one name, and I'm just clarifying that the other names that we're moving are also following under the same jurisdiction as this. So, the prior action just lists Mr. Drumno from District Two as resigning. I'm just trying to connect all the pieces because it just names one person in the description, and then we're doing a bunch of appointments, so I'm just looking for a little clarification on that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I've been working with, and the deputy city clerk, Robin Eaton, is also online, and Robin, I've unmuted you if you're able to speak. This, the resignation that's in the prior, I think that we could have maybe fleshed out the description a little further, that that particular resignation triggered another seat move for another person that was out of district on the liquor authority, so this really gets everyone in the right seats so that we can then, we're currently promoting the vacancies so that we can hopefully get folks recruited from the right district into the right seats. And that same is actually true of the Board of Adjustment. I just don't believe it was listed in the prior action completely, but it's exactly the same thing. On the Board of Adjustment, there's a member that has been in absentia, hasn't been participating, and for more than a year, and it's time for that person to step down. We have somebody else serving out of district that can then move into that seat.
Okay, that's really helpful to understand, and I understand the intent and the regulations around it. I just wasn't really sure exactly what the backstory was for all. I'm glad we're able to get the right representatives in the right district. I think that's really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'd like to go for District Three to Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Michael Griffith to the Board of Adjustment, District Three, term ending 3224.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Council Weaver has the second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Again, Council, Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Anthony Romano to Liquor Board, or sorry, Liquor Authority Board, District Three, term ending 3225.
And a second?
Second that.
Council Weaver, second stat. Any discussion on the motion? Please poll the council.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The motions for District Four, Councilor Noslerback.
I move to appoint Jesse Pearlman to the Board of Adjustment, District Four, term ending March 2nd, 2024.
Second.
There's a second by Councilman Stites, Mayor Protem Stites. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. That concludes our agenda items. Let me get back to my... Okay, I believe we will go now to City Managers Matters. Mr. Goff?
Nothing else this evening, Mayor. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. City Attorneys Matters, Mr. Dahl?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much. We will have elected officials matters. Let me start with our clerk who's online, and...
Happy New Year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you so much. And in the, oh, here, I'll start with Councilperson Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to just say that there are 56 days until the first day of spring.
All right, that's very good. Thanks so much. Councilman, Councilwoman, Noslerback?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Lutheran Hospital, and there's a new resident of Wheat Ridge. My nephew was born Owen David Hornsby this morning at 3:56 a.m., and it was so awesome to be there and a part of it all with him joining the world, but also, it's so neat to have a hospital like Lutheran in our community. The nurses there, we know them, and the doctors are, live in this community, and so it's pretty special to get to celebrate with my neighbors and friends this really exciting time in my family's life. So, anyway, love you Lutheran, love you Wheat Ridge.
Thank you very much. Councilor Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations to you and your sister. That's exciting. Is this your first time as an aunt?
Oh, woo!
Awesome. So I have a couple things. First of all, I just want to thank my colleagues on the dais, as well as city staff, for a really productive council retreat this, and strategic planning session this weekend. I think we really covered a lot of ground, and I left with just a deep appreciation for the amount of work we've done in the last two years, in particular, asking our community what's important to them, because we were able to sit down really for the first time with like just an incredible amount of data from our community, so that as we're thinking about what we want to accomplish in the next, particularly in the next year, that we're doing it informed not by our hunches, but by a lot of community engagement and feedback. So thank you, staff, for bringing that together, and thank you. It was exciting to see that we all basically heard the same things from staff and I think are headed in a good direction. And the other thing, I don't know if we've had a chance to mention this on the dais yet, but last March, Councilmember Ohm and I went to DC along with some of Wheat Ridge staff, including the city manager and the deputy city manager, and we, while we were there, met with staff from Senator Bennett and Senator Hickenlooper's office, as well as then Representative Ed Perlmutter, and made the case for Congress to provide some supplemental funding for Wadsworth. And as a result of those meetings, we were awarded $4 million towards the Wadsworth project, so I just want to, you know, recognize that those trips to DC and connecting with our federal representatives is paying off in our city, and we're seeing investments come through for that. So I just want to thank the city for the opportunity to go and advocate on behalf of our community to get more transportation money. And that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm?
Thank you, Mayor, and that was quite the opportunity, taking a multitude of classes and being with my fellow counselors and city staff. It's just a wonderful, wonderful experience that I will treasure forever, looking forward to the next one. I just wanted to bring up that I had the opportunity to go to Mestizo Brewery that just recently opened, and I ended up chatting, it's a small brewery, and I ended up chatting with one person that was from Denver. She came over to go to the brewery, and then there was another family that was from Chicago, which I was a little surprised that they're coming to Wheat Ridge to spend their tax dollars, and then as I was sitting down, Ryan, the owner, came up to me, and we had a really long chat, and, you know, it was a little untypical because he was so grateful to the business community. He mentioned the owner of Clancy's, the owner of Colorado Plus, of how welcome they were to his business, and beyond that, he mentioned specifically planning staff Stephanie Stevens, and how she was so helpful in helping him go through the process, and also helping him consider a future expansion to that business. And, you know, he was glowing about, you know, the community and the staff, and I just thought like, wow, you know, this is, this is something, and he mentioned, he didn't think he would have got that help had he been in a different community other than Wheat Ridge, and so I think that really speaks volumes of kind of where we are as a community when other businesses are supportive and like, hey, what do you, what do you need? And I'm sure you've heard that before, but I just want to thank you to all those businesses and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver?
Thank you. Thanks for saying that, Ms. Ohm. I also want to pass on that I have heard some fantastic things in District Three about very helpful planning staff and just being able to get things done, so I just wanted to pass that to the planning staff, Mr. Goff, and then also, please be aware that we have lovely dark streets and a lot of ice on them right now, and people walking with a lot of ice on streets, so as you're driving, you know, be aware of the elderly farmer lady with the bike light on her head walking out to her mailbox to get her mail. But no, there's just lots of people having to walk in or near the streets just because we have a lot of ice, so please keep your eyes open, especially when you're driving a vehicle. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Hoppe?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to mention that the Wheat Ridge High School PTSA is having a fundraiser for the year after prom, they're raising funds for their after prom, and it will be on January 27th. It's a chili cook-off. It's from 5:00 to 7:00, and you can participate in a few ways. You can go and eat chili, or if you have a chili that you'd like to show off, then get on the Wheat Ridge PTSA Facebook page, and they have a form you can fill out, and you can take your... form you can fill out, and you can take your chili over there to help them with that.
Thank you very much. Mayor Protem Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've actually also got kudos for the staff and, and council. We, we had a really great retreat this weekend, and staff did an awesome job putting together all the information we needed for that. And I think we all enjoyed getting a chance to have that discussion and, and work through that. I also have kudos for our, our Building Department and our inspectors. Not only my neighbor, but a few other local businesses have come up to me recently in the last couple of months and, and thanked me for whatever we're doing in the Building Department, because the inspectors are, are very knowledgeable and, and doing a really good job, which is, which is good, because that's not something we've always heard in Wheat Ridge. So it's nice to see that turning around. And I know our focus on customer service has been a, a big part of that. Last Wednesday during the big snowstorm, or the snowstorm that wasn't, either way, I got to cut the ribbon at District Three's newest big restaurant, which is Esther's. And we had a great business mix there with the Wheat Ridge Business Association. It was a lot of fun and a great group of people. And Esther's is a phenomenal restaurant if you haven't been in there yet. But got a chance to meet and talk with the owners, Paul and his wife, and they're pretty fantastic. So we were just lucky to have them, and as is District Three, and as is that, that shopping center at 26th and Kipling. It's, it's growing and it's looking pretty cool. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, if you can find it, find it by Wheat Ridge. Okay, thank you very much, Mayor Protem Stites. And I will echo with you that we've, we've got a lot of great businesses coming into Wheat Ridge, doing business cuttings that seem, or, business, ribbon cuttings in businesses, seems like every other week. So congratulations to Mestizo and to Esther's for opening up just lately. And I want to thank Colorado Plus and the Seniors Resource Center for hosting our very productive retreat for City Council this last weekend. We had a lot of great discussions, and I think we've got a lot of, a great agenda, and we've really got a hard-working council and staff. So I really appreciate the, the staff, the staff's presentation, the counselors', great discussion. And I think we've got a great direction to move forward. Echoing Counselor Weaver's hopes that everyone drives safely and slowly through our, through our city. Next Monday is the fifth Monday of the month, if I'm not wrong. And we will not have a meeting here, but we will be back at a study session in this room the following Monday, the first Monday in February. And directly after this meeting ends, we're going to have a, a special study session. So hopefully you'll be able to stay for that. And with that, if there's no more business to come before the council, we will stand adjourned. And does anyone want to take a break before we go into our study session, or go right into study session? All right, let's... Yeah, not, not if you can buy it, if you can find it. Okay. Great. Well, then I would like to call to order the special study session for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado. We, we need to, we need to have order on the dais, if you would, please. No, no good can come of this. Okay, we have one item on our agenda tonight is a report on our, an update on our open space management plan. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We do. It looks like they're getting the presentation pulled up by Karen O'Donnell again, our full team over here. Parks and Rec Director. She'll introduce our, our guest.
You are.
I was like, it didn't sound loud. Hello again. I'm Karen O'Donnell, Director of Parks and Recreation. And I am here to introduce our consultant, Taylor Broihill. You all on council will remember from Friday night, I did give you a brief synopsis of what's happened with the open space management plan. But Taylor, with Logan Simpson, has facilitated this process from the beginning and is going to give you a little more in-depth information. And then at the end, we will be here to answer questions, myself, Taylor, and then Andrew McDonald is our Forestry and Open Space Supervisor, who is also acting as the, acting Parks Forestry and Open Space Manager at this time while we're recruiting, and has been leading this process from the staff side. So without further ado, Taylor, take it away.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Sarker and City Council, as Director O'Donnell said. My name's Taylor Broihill. I'm an Associate Planner with Logan Simpson and Project Manager, have been working closely with Parks Forestry and Open Space staff to update the city's 2002 open space management plan. So tonight I will give you a brief update on sort of what we've accomplished so far in the process, where we are right now and along the way. We'll highlight our community engagement results, which sort of provides the foundation and tees us up for the draft vision, the overarching goals, as well as the preliminary recommendations that will be the bulk of this presentation tonight. And then I'll close out by providing our, or outlining our next steps for moving towards development of the plan. So just a quick reminder of the purpose of this project. We are updating the city's over 20-year-old open space management plan, building on the success and the accomplishments of the city and the department that they have been able to achieve since that plan was adopted in 2002. But also taking into consideration everything that has changed during that time. So the evolving uses of the Green Belt and the Clear Creek Trail, as well as the increases in visitor, just the sheer numbers of visitors to the Green Belt and users on the trail. And really striving to strike that balance between the recreational use of the city's open space assets, as well as the conservation and the stewardship goals of managing these assets. And so we are looking at a 10-year planning horizon for most of the recommendations of this plan, although there will be some that I will go over tonight that will exceed that and are a little more aspirational in long-term. Okay, so we kicked off this planning process in May, and have been working through a multi-faced approach that will span approximately 12 months by the time we're all said and done. And that is pretty typical of plans of this nature and scope. And we've spent the first three phases essentially in a data collection kind of mode. So we've been conducting site visits to the city's open space, including from our trail engineering partners, as well as our field biologists. And then we've also conducted a fair amount of community engagement up to this point, both through virtual and in-person opportunities. And so we're currently in Phase Five of the project now, where we've developed the draft vision, the goals, and the preliminary recommendations that I'll be sharing with you in just a few moments. But what has really laid the foundation for being able to present those items to you tonight is the public input that we've received up until this point. So you can think of our engagement as taking place in three stages. We've essentially completed those first two stages. We began just by listening to the community, really seeking input on what the community sees as opportunities, as challenges, sort of what their concerns are when it comes to the city's open space assets, as well as really just generally what their vision is for the future. And so through that first stage of engagement, we've been able to connect with approximately 346 community members. And that set us up for our second stage of engagement, where we took the input that we received from the community in the summer and translated that into more concrete and actionable ideas and recommendations, presented that back to the community, essentially sort of doing kind of a gut check on what we heard from them, making sure that we captured their intent, and that we correctly understood their vision. And so through that stage of engagement, we were able to connect with approximately 221 community members. And that's really what has provided us with a strong understanding of the community's vision, as well as the values that they place around the city's open space and the Clear Creek Trail. So through that understanding, as well as drawing inspiration from the current plans, vision and mission, we developed a draft mission for this plan that states that the Wheat Ridge community envisions a future where open space is stewarded as a wondrous, wild and renewing sanctuary for present and future generations of plant, animal, and human communities. Wheat Ridge Open Space balances recreation with conservation and restoration of the surrounding natural ecosystem. In addition to the vision, we've identified six thematic goals that emerge consistently through our engagement process. And so just starting there at the top of the slide, although these are in no particular order, these goals are, the first one reads to practice proactive stewardship, conservation, and adaptive resource management for healthy habitat in riparian areas. The second bullet, to expand access and connectivity to the Clear Creek, or what is a segment of the Peaks to Plains Trail, as the backbone of the city in order to connect neighborhoods to each other, to nature, and to outdoor experiences. To prioritize safety in order to address real and perceived threats to health, well-being, and security of open space and trail visitors. To educate, inform, and inspire all user groups to practice trail etiquette, respect the natural environment, and obey regulations through an understanding of management practices. To enhance the visitor experience and trail character by investing in amenities and facilities. And to leverage partnerships within the Clear Creek watershed with adjacent municipalities and trail managers, with community organizations and volunteer groups to provide a coordinated approach to management and maintenance and the user So I'll pause here for just a moment before I move on to the preliminary recommendations and just allow any questions for, if you have questions about our community engagement process, or about the draft vision, or the overarching goals.
Any questions from council? Councilwoman Hoppe?
Thank you, Mayor. I know that, that as counselors, we're aware of the different ways that you guys connected with the community, but could you just kind of go over some of the things that you guys did?
Absolutely. So during the first phase, we started with conducting some targeted constituent interviews, talked to a lot of different groups in the community. We also sort of introduced the project to the community at the Carnation Festival with a pop-up engagement booth that kind of, again, just introduced the project and also outlined opportunities for engagement going forward. We held a work session with the Parks and Recreation Commission, conducted a virtual sort of focus group. And then probably our biggest effort early in the process was the, there was a large online community-wide questionnaire, and that's been our biggest source of input to date. We also, during that first stage of listening to the community, conducted a trail user intercept survey that was deployed using signs within the Green Belt and along the trail that had a QR code to a short survey that was aimed at capturing details about the trail or the Green Belt visitors' experience at that day and time, capturing data such as how crowded they felt the trail was, things of that nature. So, so that was all sort of packaged into that first stage. And then the second stage, preliminary recommendations, like I said, we took that information, repackaged it into the concrete ideas that we're, that we heard, presented that back to the community. We held an open house with the 44th Avenue SubArea Plan. So tag teamed with them to, to host an event at the Recreation Center in September. We also put that same information in the form of online interactive maps, where the community members who maybe couldn't attend the open house were able to go online, look at the different ideas and recommendations we're considering, add their own, or comment on, on what was there. And also included some targeted invitations, once those maps were live, to some community groups to make sure they were aware of that opportunity. Most recently, held a meeting to present the ideas similar to what you're hearing tonight with the Parks and Recreation Commission, so to get their feedback. And we also conducted a virtual community focus group on these particular preliminary recommendations as well. And so that's sort of what brings us here to this point tonight.
Thank you for going through that. I know that we did a very robust process. I just wanted those that are watching at home to know that we really worked hard to make sure to get those interested, to get their voices. Thanks.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. And I will say that we do, you'll see that third sort of box there. We plan to conduct our last stage of engagement around the draft plan, once we have that available. Any other questions related to the slides I've covered so far before we move on?
Looks like we're good.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we have organized these preliminary recommendations into three categories, the first being related to restoration and conservation, the second being trail connectivity, and the third sort of being a catch-all category for general recommendations that apply corridor-wide or are related to some very sort of specific topics. So I will sort of provide that high-level overview for you over the next few slides. So we'll start with riparian and habitat restoration. So we asked the community to consider 13 different ideas or preliminary recommendations related to this topic, and really heard broad support for all of them, and especially with a preference for conservation remaining as the priority for this plan, and also for, for management of open space. So that includes taking approaches like targeted formalization of social trails, evaluating ones that it might make sense for the city to formalize and maintain, as well as an approach that reclaims and revegetates other social trails in areas where it's not appropriate to continue to have human impact in the Green Belt. And then the third bullet there, a strong preference for more self-directed recreation in the Green Belt, so limiting active recreation and development, and, and sort of maintaining the recreation opportunities that are available with some improvements. So one area that sort of encapsulates this opportunity to balance the recreational use with conservation with restoration efforts is Tabor Lake. So if you're, this perspective is sort of as if you were standing at the northeast corner of the lake looking southwest, back where the trail is currently. So on this image, it's sort of to the left, but that's the south side of Tabor Lake. So there is an opportunity along with the Tabor Lake Trail, the Natural Surface Trail, it's, it's sort of in, we're in the works and planning right now that will circumnavigate the lake. With the implementation of that project will come increased visitation and recreation in this area. And so it's a real opportunity to balance that increased visitation with an equal investment in restoration, revegetation of the lake's banks, revegetation of the area south of the lake that leads on to Clear Creek, where there are a number of social trails that have been developed. And it's also an opportunity to provide some interpretation around the importance of the habitat that's provided here, especially the water bird nesting island that's in the center of the lake. And also to provide some community education and interpretation of the restoration efforts that are taking place, so that there's a better, like an improved understanding of why certain management practices are in place. So things like the seasonal closure of the lake to, to paddling or to boats, and any other restoration efforts that the city implements in this area. I mentioned reclamation of social trails and expansion or formalization of others. So this is a concept where we're looking at the area south of West Lake, but like what we, what I just showed at Tabor Lake, the ideas here are ones that can be expanded to other areas of the Green Belt, but we're just sort of just taking a targeted look at what some of these recommendations could mean if they were implemented. So the yellow line on this map represents an expansion of the conservation trail. So this is largely a social trail that exists currently. And this whole area sort of south of West Lake is really just sort of permeated by social trails that kind of web around the whole area. So this concept envisions formalizing a portion of that social trail, connecting it to the existing conservation trail, but avoiding wetlands, avoiding sensitive habitat areas for particularly the monarch butterfly and the youth ladies' tresses orchid. And then taking an aggressive approach to restoration by revegetating those areas where human impact is, is really not appropriate in terms of preserving the habitat that's already there. So this is an approach that, like the Tabor Lake concept, like a lot of the recommendations that I'll cover tonight, is really aimed at balancing that desire for recreation with that I'll cover tonight, is really aimed at balancing that desire for recreation with conservation. So, you know, we acknowledge that there's a desire from Green Belt users to have a more natural sort of backcountry experience, and that's why people go to areas like this. So acknowledging that, they will likely continue to go to areas like this, but how can that impact be limited to a single corridor rather than sort of all over the place like it is currently? So moving on to trailheads and trail connections, we asked the community under this particular topic to consider, let's see, 20 different ideas or preliminary recommendations related to connectivity, including specific access points. The things that we heard broad community support for are listed there on the slide. So, strong support for an action that the city is already taking, which is to expand sort of the tread of the Clear Creek Trail by installing natural surface crusher fines where feasible and where it's possible to provide an additional space for pedestrians. So it's great to hear that the community supports that. We also heard strong support for additional bicycle and pedestrian access points. So I won't go over every single one of those tonight, but we will make recommendations within the plan for specific new access and for improving where the city currently has access, with particular emphasis on how to make those more accessible and compliant under the Americans with Disabilities Act. And that will include incorporating recommendations of the 2017 Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan as well as the 44th Avenue SubArea Plan. And then the last bullet here on the slide is definitely an opportunistic project, although it came up early on in our engagement. And we heard continued support for this concept for a future trail along Lena Gulch to be considered. We recognize that, you know, the ability of that idea to be realized is really dependent on several factors, like what Denver Water decides to do with the corridor, whether or not feasibility study can actually determine a physical alignment that's feasible, and the city's opportunity to even acquire the corridor. So, again, an opportunistic project, but it was mentioned enough that I felt it was worth including here tonight. And then, third, we asked the community to consider 23 additional general recommendations for the trail and for the Green Belt corridor. Strong support for continuing to study potential solutions for the Kipling Crossing. Our team did take a preliminary look at that, and so I'll provide some more detail on that in just a moment. Also, strong support for installing lighting at all underpasses on the trail, as well as evaluating the feasibility of converting the barn that's in front of the Recreation Center into a potential trail amenity. We also asked the community about a couple of specific concepts related to recreational use of water, specifically Clear Creek and the lakes that are within the Green Belt. So we know, much like the social trails, that there are folks who access Clear Creek for waiting, for swimming at particular locations. And so, the idea of providing a formalized recreational access point for that is, you know, attempting to address the notion that people will probably continue to do this, but is there an opportunity to make that behavior safer by designating a location where it's appropriate to do that, as well as providing regulatory signage or safety signage and an appropriate approach to the water that doesn't contribute to erosion? So we've heard mixed support on both sides of that from the community. We acknowledge that there is, you know, there's a, there are a lot of questions around liability related to this, legality related to water rights, and low-water bridges, and especially water quality as well. So it's really an issue that, in the plan, you know, we wanted to gauge community opinion on this, but the recommendation of the plan leans towards if this is something that the city pursues, it really requires further study, and really digging into some of those issues related to liability and legality. We also asked the community for their input on the idea of amenitizing some of the recreational uses of the lakes, so specifically fishing and non-motorized watercraft in the lakes where it's allowed. So, not talking about an expansion of the recreational uses that are currently allowed, but looking at if those uses are allowed, how are they managed? And so, what we proposed to the community was to consider infrastructure such as a fishing pier, fishing piers, docks, paddle access ramps, ways to get your boat or your Santa paddleboard into the water in the lakes where that's appropriate. There has been hesitance, like I said, with strong community preference for self-guided recreation and minimizing active recreation amenities, but there's also support for infrastructure in the sense that it can, again, manage human impacts that are occurring in the Green Belt. So providing designated points where it's appropriate to access the lakes versus sort of uncontrolled access to the shoreline. And this is actually a recommendation that was included in the 2002 plan. At that time, they were specifically concerned about anglers trampling habitat related to the yew lady's tresses orchid, which is an endangered species. So we sort of revived that for this planning process as one of our recommendations. Okay, moving on to the Kipling Crossing. I mentioned consistent community support for evaluating potential solutions for this crossing. As I'm sure that you are aware, the challenge here is that the current trail sends trail users south about a half mile to use the underpass. And a lot of folks consider that to be enough of a detour that inconveniences them, and they cross directly at Kipling where the Kipling West Trailhead is located. We know that through anecdotal data, just from folks observing it. We also know that from looking at Strava heat maps, if you're familiar with that app. It's a fitness app that many runners and cyclists use to track their activity. And when you look at the heat map, it shows you where folks are going. So we can look at that and see, you know, it's not exactly scientific, but at least it gives an indication of sort of the volume. So we looked at opportunities to address that, how to make that crossing safer in terms of, again, the notion that folks will probably continue to cross there because they don't want to be inconvenienced by traveling south. So we evaluated opportunities for grade-separated crossings as well as at grades, so grade-separated being an underpass or an overpass. And ultimately determined that an underpass and overpass are really not feasible in this location where the Kipling West Trailhead sort of intersects with Kipling Street. That's why your underpass is probably where it is, right? So the area is within the 100-year floodplain, and any infrastructure that would be necessary to provide an underpass or an overpass would raise the base flood elevation in that area and in close proximity to Colorado Water Conservation Board's insurable structures, Lena Gulch, the bridge, the vehicular bridge that's just north of that area. So that would not be permissible by the Water Conservation Board. Additionally, there's just not enough space on the west side with the proximity to Lena Gulch in order to provide the ramping that would be necessary for it to be an ADA-compliant crossing. So we evaluated at-grade crossings, which there are two primary options, so fully signalizing that intersection where the current ride-in, ride-out, Kipling West Trailhead driveway is, and also pedestrian hybrid beacon, which is sometimes referred to as a HAWK beacon or abbreviated as PHB. And so those are the two options that we feel are most feasible with particular, an understanding that the PHB concept, the pedestrian hybrid beacon, is likely to be the most appropriate in this location. I will say that as part of a recommendation of the plan, we are suggesting a detailed traffic engineering feasibility study if the city is to pursue any treatment at this area. And the reason for that is really to, one, understand impacts to traffic if any of these treatments are pursued, and two, to establish the actual volume of trail traffic that's crossing in this area. So you see here on the slide, this is potential concept showing the pedestrian hybrid beacon, which would require realignment of the trail. But it essentially is, that photo you see in the bottom left, it's a flashing light that fully stops traffic, it's activated by users when they need to cross. And this concept as well makes use of the wide center median to provide a pedestrian refuge for trail users. So there's really four main reasons that this sort of rises to the top in terms of what we think might be the most appropriate treatment here. One is that it requires a lower volume of traffic, trail crossing traffic, in order for CDOT to permit it. So you only need to establish 20 pedestrians crossing per hour. So that would be at the current underpass, and also those who are just going directly across. It also results in fewer conflict points between pedestrians and vehicles than fully signalizing the trailhead driveway. And it also would result in shorter delays to traffic because it would only be delayed for the amount of time that it takes pedestrians to cross, whereas fully signalizing that intersection would mean converting the trailhead driveway to full access, which would mean it needs to account for left-hand turns going out, people coming south, making left-hand turns going in. So it's just a little bit higher of an impact to that area. And so for that same reason, the pedestrian hybrid beacon is also a more cost-effective option as well. Okay, so that was quite a lot of information. I'll summarize just quickly next steps, and then we'll open it up for discussion. So after tonight, we'll take any impact that, any input that we hear from you all, we'll finalize our concepts and ideas into recommendations that we'll bring into the draft plan. And then we'll also work through project prioritization with the Parks and Recreation Commission, with city staff. And we're ultimately targeting having a draft plan for public review in March, taking that draft plan after we incorporate additional public comment, taking that to the Parks and Recreation Commission in April, and then targeting, bringing the plan to you all to City Council to consider for adoption in May. And at this time, I will stop talking and just open it up for any questions or comments. I can work backwards through the slides if there are any particular ideas that you'd like to spend time discussing.
Thank you very much. Before we take questions from council, I'd like to open this up to the public to speak on this item. If you, I have no one signed up to speak, but if you're here in the hall and would like to speak, you may come to the podium now and speak. And I'll ask if we have anyone online who has raised their hand, if you're online and want to speak on this study session item, you may do so now by raising your hand. And it doesn't look like we have anyone raising their hand or coming forward. So I will close our public's right to speak on this item and open it up to questions from council. Councilor Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, and I really, really appreciate all the different types of community engagement that you've done to this point. You know, doing a community engagement for Parks and Rec and like open space and trails is a little easier because you can actually go where people using it are, so that's really helpful. So the crossing at Kipling has just been a concern forever, and it's unsafe, and it's really hard to manage people's behavior because of the current options that are there. I'm a little concerned about the proposal for the pedestrian hybrid beacon, because the warrants for that are based off of pedestrian usage, but the usage is going to be by cyclists. And there, you know, on the weekends, there are literally probably over 100 cyclists an hour that would be using that. So I think, you know, I know CDOT will, a traffic study will take a look at all of those things, but I'm a little, I'm a little leery of a pedestrian solution when the issue's really cyclists, not pedestrians. Has that been considered when you guys were looking at that?
Yes, that's a great question. And then actually, I should clarify, when I say pedestrians, that is the term that CDOT would use when they're considering cyclists as well. So they're assuming they're dismounting their pedestrian, they're, you know, activating the crosswalk, and then they're walking across and then remounting their bike. So they would be included in the count as well. Although any count that takes place as part of this study should definitely differentiate between the modes of transportation. But yes, that would, that would be included.
Okay, yeah, I'm just concerned that the heavy usage on the weekends is gonna have a lot of stopping. So we'd love a solution, and it's unfortunate that we can't look at a grade-separated. But did, is the city looking at, as part of this plan, or maybe as part of other plans, just improving the access on the west side that is currently going in front of Yakin Yeti? So I can, I mean, am I correct in that the trail goes in front of the rec center, and then it goes in front of Yakin Yeti and connects? And so that's, do we technically consider that stretch to be part of the trail along Kipling there, that connection piece?
Yeah, I believe so. There was actually some changes several years ago to that area to connect it, have a cleaner connection, it's not very clean, but to the rec center so that you go under the underpass, so that is the official trail.
Okay. Just in looking at all of that, I mean, there's just a lot of user conflict with the Yakin Yeti part. I know there was a really bad accident this year there. So as we're looking at that holistically, there'll still be trail movement that uses the existing underpass in front of the rec center. And it would just be really great to do the improvements that can be done to improve that access along the west side of Kipling from 41st to the, to the trailhead as well. So, thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Gossler, back.
Thanks, and thanks so much for the presentation. With the Tabor Lake plans, just with the, I see that section that has, oh yeah, right, go, go to the next slide? Yeah, so there's the RV dealership and plans for a screen, it looks like, and I just wanted to see if we've done much to like outreach to the, to the business owners there at the RV dealership, just because I'm interested, I would just imagine that they may be interested in having a space in the back of their business that looked like an area that you would recreate in, and maybe take kind of a creative idea to them that, you know, that people can go set up their RV in the back and look out into this beautiful open space? Just an idea, and I just, I guess my question for you is, have we had conversations with them? And just seems like an opportunity for some kind of public-private opportunity.
Yeah, absolutely. I love that idea. No, we have not reached out directly to that RV dealer, at least I have not personally. I believe there are social trails that connect from the back of that property into the open space. I think it's a great idea to consider a partnership there. I think we would need to take a look at some of the habitat that's in that area just to maybe reassess if it's appropriate to provide access directly to it. But, yeah, I think the idea of involving the neighbors is fantastic, so thank you for mentioning that. If you need any help in that or whatever, happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for that very good presentation. I know there's a lot of effort in this. I've spent some time back in that, what is on the bottom of that page there, you know, in the social trails. I don't know if you, if you did get a chance to walk back there, but there's a lot of vegetation, kind of poor visibility. I definitely encountered several homeless camps that I stayed away from. I don't know what the public's perception of trying to open this. I'd be, you know, I don't know if we could make that trail a much more wider trail and open it up a little bit for the public's perception of safety, but I would definitely be in support of that. It's a, it's a, it's a really nice area, it's interesting, there's a lot of different gray terrain. I don't know how many of us on council have kind of walked through that area, but I've spent a little bit of time back there. And then my next, the next area I kind of want to focus on is the, the Kipling area. The Kipling Crossing, as a cyclist, generally when a The, the Kipling Crossing, as a cyclist, generally when the weather's definitely warmer, I'm on that trail probably at least three times a week. And rarely would I, if there's no traffic, I've actually crossed at, not here, but at the intersection, a little bit further south. But generally, I just go underneath the tunnel for safety. But I would be in favor of this. What was the other concept for stopping traffic, the one before this?
The other at-grade option would be to, and we didn't develop a rendering of this due to our preference for the PHB, but it would be to fully signalize the Kipling West Trailhead driveway, so it would be converted from ride-in, ride-out to a full left-in, left-out, and ride-in, ride-out. And so it would be a true, an additional stoplight.
The, and the only, I would be in favor of that too, if CDOT was in favor of it. And I don't, have you reached out to CDOT?
Well, you haven't. This is a really preliminary analysis, and we do have a detailed memo that we provided to staff that will be included in the plan. This is sort of the high-level analysis, but they would definitely need to be included in the traffic engineering study, the Region 1 engineering.
And was it you that I spoke to, like, I don't know, somewhere or so ago?
Early on, yes.
Yeah, the, the, the issue that I have right now with that green belt is unfortunately a little bit further north of that little pedestrian bridge. It has a very poor radius. It's so sharp that I almost have to get off my bike when I'm clipped in, and so honestly, I just avoid it. I don't go to the end. I usually just bail at the original bridge and come up independents and just avoid this section altogether is the easiest for me because of the, the radius is so tight. And when you're clipped in, for those that don't have that idea, you're, you're really committed. And if you're not going fast enough, you're, you're going to turn over on your side, which is really dangerous. And so I just avoid it altogether. But I do see some people that come to that area, cross the bridge, and then they decide what they, you know, how am I going to get across? And some continue south and do the same way I do. And then I did want, I did want to get a feeling, maybe we could have a chief weigh-in, like, is, is Kipling, I mean, my perception is that Kipling is, it's a major arterial, there's a lot of traffic. I do see an occasional accident. Is that, does it, does it just seem like, and I don't necessarily need a number, but does it seem like in between 38th and 44th or maybe near this, that it generally has a lot of accidents? Or is it, you know, pretty, you know, as safe as, you know, Wadsworth pre, you know, pre-construction, that they're both pretty similar?
I would say, based on 2021, 2022, 2022 stats, that before the Wadsworths' construction, Wadsworth was a, was a little worse around some of these, but we had 25 accidents at 38th and Kipling and 33 accidents for 2022 at Kipling and 44th. So those are busy intersections for us, and certainly we have more pedestrians crossing up by 44th, I think, than, you know, around 38th. But we do have plenty of activity over there, and they are, some of them were dangerous intersections in our city.
I just know there's a lot of volume. And then the, thank you. And then the, definitely the, I agree with your lighting at the underpass. The lights are very poor in that tunnel. They're like a yellow type because of all the insects and stuff. And if we could have a little more lighting, maybe on the, on the ends or something for safety, I would agree with that. The, the barn into a trail amenity, I talked with Patrick with this, and I'm, I'm not the only one that's brought this up, but I, I really see that as, you know, I don't know if it would change with this, but I just keep thinking like that, that barn is a true amenity, and I could foresee that as some type of, maybe, you know, you rent a bike, maybe there's a little, little cafe or something outside, and it becomes kind of a, an entry, I mean, it said 50% of the people are coming from outside of Wheat Ridge. When I'm on this bike trail, I see a lot of electric bikes that I know are being rented from Golden, and they're coming from Golden to Wheat Ridge. I, there's a lot of opportunities for Wheat Ridge to have some type of, you know, food trucks or something as these visitors are coming along the trail. And I just, my opinion is, we don't, we really don't have those opportunities as people are traveling into our city. And perhaps the, you know, that barn could be kind of part of that, to kind of welcome people and, and there's, you know, I've, I've, I've had, I've had personal experiences living in other places where, you know, as cyclists, you would have a little place where everybody would convene, and you'd have a coffee or something, and you'd have a really good experience to chat with your friends. And that, and that's kind of what I see just as a potential for that. Thank you so much for your, your presentation and look forward to the future of this. Thank you.
Sort of a Howard Johnson's on the trail. Councilor Weaver.
Yeah. I'll have to think about that one. Yeah, okay. I was just curious about the idea, I'm just a person who has been threatened to be arrested by getting in lakes in Colorado because there is no swimming allowed in many, many places. And I was just curious what the rules are around, I know you can be on a boat, like a paddleboard. Are there issues, though, when I see a paddleboard's boat's ramp and platform? Are we, are we going into a new area of liability? And, and like, what, what does that look like for Wheat Ridge to be a paddleboard destination on, on some of this water? And, yeah, I, I'm, I'm just curious, just with...
Sure, I'll provide a little context. I won't, I am not an attorney, I won't...
And I'm not against paddleboarding. I love it.
...to liability, but, so currently, non-motorized watercraft are allowed in lakes, right, in the lakes right now, right? And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, this is in Bass Lake and, not in Bass Lake, in West Lake and in Tabor Lake.
Right now.
During, from May through, not May through October, October through May. So outside of the nesting season for the island. So currently, that is a use that is allowed in those two lakes. So our recommendation is that if those uses are to continue to be allowed, they should be managed in such a way rather than having sort of just free access to the shoreline wherever a paddler would, you know, drag their boat down, potentially damaging habitat or creating additional erosion. I'm not sure if that would increase the city's liability by providing the infrastructure, the appropriate infrastructure for that, but that is certainly something to consider and consult.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was just curious. So people are currently using it to paddleboard on West Lake?
I have personally not observed it. I know it is allowed. I might defer to staff on any additional context they want to add.
I don't think of that water as exceptionally clean, I guess.
Yeah, and I, I would add, you know, I agree, we, we definitely have some water quality issues that our team is working on. So me as an individual, I probably wouldn't want to go paddleboarding there, but I feel the same way about a lot of other places that people utilize throughout the state, and just, you kind of just hope you don't fall in. So, yeah, no swimming is permitted, but obviously, you know, somebody might fall off of their paddleboard, and then they just, they're expected to just get back on and, and continue.
But we're not responsible regarding the water quality issues?
Correct. And, yeah, that, the algae bloom has happened in lakes all across the state. I'm sure Andrew could speak more technically than I can, but I've paddleboarded on...
Have you all seen paddleboarders on West Lake?
I've seen kayakers. I've never seen paddleboarders. I don't know if you have.
On occasion, I have. Or in, inflatables.
Oh, okay. All right. I, I was just curious what the liability was around something like that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? I don't see any. Ms. Royhill, thank you very much for stimulating discussion. A great-looking project. Looks like we've got some, still some decisions to be made and some finish-up on the, on the plan. But thank you very much. We'll look forward to, forward to the final presentation and see how it goes from there.
Great. Thank you again for the additional time tonight, for your support for this project. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, that, let's see, that was our one study session item. We will go to staff reports. Mr. Goff?
Nothing else this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thanks so much. And elected officials' reports, any, any, raise your hand if you have anything further to go. Council, Councilor Holtein.
Thank you. I completely forgot, at the city council meeting, when I was giving previous comments, that on the 31st, the Wheat Ridge Active Transportation Advisory Team is hosting their State of the City, and it's going to be a great gathering at Colorado Plus. I believe it starts at 7:00 PM. And it's a great opportunity to learn more about the different, both advocacy as well as programming things they're up to and what they're focusing on in 2023. Yours truly will be one of the guest speakers, but I really encourage anyone who's interested in topics that have come up tonight, which is how do you get around our town by walking and biking and taking transit? It's a great way to, to meet your neighbors who care about the same things and to find out how to get more involved in making our city more walkable and bikable. Hope to see you there.
Councilor Weaver.
I just wanted to note that I am not against paddleboarding in any way, or the lakes in Wheat Ridge, just as a caveat.
Okay, okay. Any other matters by elected officials? Okay, that will conclude our meeting for tonight. We will stand adjourned. Thank you.